I'm gonna call this board at six o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Seven o'clock we give thanks for another day. And we ask you to come into this meeting to make sure that we make the right decision to benefit Jeff Davis County, the City of Hazlerhurst. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Bless your name.
Praise the heavens to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments, we got a lot. Heather Meehan. She here? Okay, let's move down to number seven. Jeff Davis County Development Authority under federal recognition recognizes colored essay contest winners.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all very much for allowing us to come tonight and recognize our census essay winners. We did some census coloring contests for the elementary and middle school and some essay contests for the high school. And of course, we want to remind everybody that the census provides important data for the community that we use, that the state uses, and our federal government will use to divide up our districts and will determine how many seats we'll have in the U.S. House of Representatives and our state senate and state house, of course. This week, census forms begin arriving this week in your mailbox. You can fill out and return them via mail. You can go online, you can use your phone. So there's a variety of ways. We just want to make sure that the past two censuses Jeff Davis County has only counted about fifty percent of the people. So we want to make sure that we get that census count up because that's about worth about, for every person that's missed, it's worth about twenty-five hundred dollars a year. So for ten years until the next census is counted, we're talking about twenty-five thousand dollars a year that could be allotted for our community. So we also want to remind everybody that we're having a family fun day on March 28th. We thank y'all for helping us fund that out at the fairgrounds. And it's gonna be on that Saturday. We're gonna have lots of carnival rides and family fun and people can fill out their censuses there, get in free, and have access to all those fun things. So I'm gonna call up our essay winners, and I definitely want to thank Ms. Debbie Cobb too because she's kind of been the one who organized this with the school system. And we'll call up our ninth grade winners, our first place ninth grade winner. If I've heard your name, I apologize in advance. Our ninth grade first place winner is Sergio Marquez. Marquez. Come on. There you go. Stand up there for just a minute. And they get a Walmart gift card, so it was worth it to write an essay. Our ninth grade second place winner is Carolina Pena. And our 10th grade first place winner is Joshua Parker. Our 10th grade second place winner is Christine Herndon. Our 11th grade first place winner is Amir Joyce. Our 11th grade second place winner, Christian Sam. And our 12th grade, 12th grade first place winner is Eli McKitchen. And our second place 12th grade winner is Ashlyn Booknight. And just Debbie Cobb is gonna get a picture of y'all, I think. They're with him. Y'all kind of, and Eli McKitchen could not be here tonight 'cause he's at Mass in Jacksonville getting ready to go into the Navy. Yep, there you go. Y'all squeeze him a little bit. Amir.
I'm ready.
Come on. Here's Amir. One, two. Hold on, do this one together. One, two, three.
Thank y'all.
Good job. Thank you very much.
Y'all make sure and go home and get your censuses filled up.
We have some very talented students. They did a great job writing essays. So they have some really good English grammar teachers here in Jeff Davis County outside that. Second thing that we want to talk about on the agenda is the Silicon Ranch.
What about Heather Meehan? Is she here? Heather? No Heather? Go on, go on, go to the next one, Lowry back. Alyssa from Roy Taylor. Damage to the truck from washout that was not caused.
It might be this thing. It's our son's truck. The road is stringly dark. It's, what's the number? Morris Williams Road. The washout was almost up to my knee. There was that big of a rut. There was no markings whatsoever. Busted his tie rod end, bobbled both of the front fenders, and bent his wheel to the point we're gonna have to send it off to be fixed. And, you know.
That dirt road, I'm sorry.
It is, it's back there behind the solar panels. And the kid that was riding with him, I don't have him here with us because I didn't know I had to do this till yesterday and I didn't get ahold of him. But he even said he wasn't even, you know, dirt roads are thirty-five mile an hour. He wouldn't even go in that fast. You know, we, we weren't paycheck to paycheck. You know, we were just hoping maybe that, you know, county can help pay for some of the damages to that young'un's truck. I mean, I got a police report. I don't know. You know. He's not a bad kid. Impressive, I can tell you that.
This obviously happened after the rains, or is it?
It did, but like it was so dark, he didn't know it was there. I mean, because when we went to pick him and the truck up, you couldn't see a hand or finger in your face. It was so dark that night.
Has it been picked since?
It was fixed the very next morning because I went back out there to take more pictures because my pictures were took at night. And it was, yeah, it had been fixed bright and early that morning.
When did this happen? Friday night?
Friday night.
They was out working overtime and getting them well.
And I know they were. I get that. But at the same time, you know, he's got a truck payment and insurance payment, and Mom and Eddie got another young'un to raise too. So.
Will we just get back? Maybe let's talk about it. We'll just get back with you.
Okay. Do you, what do you need from me?
Just leave a phone number. We'll get ahold of you.
Okay. Do you want me to put it on a piece of paper?
Is it on the paper?
No, there was no spot to put it, so I didn't put one.
Right now. Can we just write down for you what's your number?
Okay, nine one two, five five one, three nine seven five.
Make sure I got it right. Nine one two, five five one, three nine seven five.
Yes, sir.
Your name is Lisa?
Yes, sir. All right, thank y'all.
For the next one, this is all our jail company. Two fifty-two, Ross, nine, washout.
What I can talk about here at the church out here, and I don't ride outside to see the demons, but who craves that road in there? That little road that goes between the church and the nursing home there? Who is it that craves that road? Is it the city or is it the county?
I gotta find you.
The county.
It's private road.
Is it by this road?
No.
Well, there's a house right to the side. They can't even get in the yard out there.
That's right.
But it's private, they can't yet. Next thing I want to ask about is on Floyd Road outside. But anyhow, I all land there. My two brothers all lands there. And my dad was the first one to settle in there, in that place. And whenever he settled, there was a road went down and there was a ditch all the way down both sides. My brother that lives down at this time, his, his got, got where his mail lady can't even get to the mailbox. I've seen her had a funnel ship bogged down trying to get it because all that water runs right down on his place there. But there used to be a ditch all the way up to the end of the road. And I'd like to know why that ditch was covered up and why it just goes part the way down. Is it, if I'm, I mean, it's something I need to know. I would like to know what it is, how come it's done that way.
We worked, we worked out on that road, Robert and that's in Jamesville District. We've tried to work on that road some out there.
Give it, give it, the ditch just goes part the way. It don't go all the way and all that water and mud shoots right down on his place.
That's right. If you're talking about the ditch on the side of Lee's house, away by his house.
Yes, right. It went all the way to the corner. And you can plainly see where it was at one time. Why is it not there now? Would I like to have that explanation? I'd like to know why. If there's something that's a good reason for it, then we ain't got nothing to say. But now if there's not a good explanation, we'd like to know why.
Something on a ditch here sits out, been here five years. I don't know where the thing, the cover up water.
You can see where the ditch was. If you go out and look at it, you can plainly see where the ditch was at one time.
Would you like a ditch back there?
Yes, sir. It split over water on that. You got that road, it's leaning sideways like this. Now, if I have children put on our property and move in there, a school bus even went down there and likely slide over to the ditch. It's, it's getting lower and lower on one side than on the other. And we'd like to, we'd like to know why it's that way. What is, why is it that way? You know, if it's a good explanation, if it's something that we don't know, then we'll accept.
It was like that when I come aboard and James come aboard. We been out there.
We'll find that out for you in a game.
We sure like to know about it. And if it's good, we, we want to do what we gotta do, okay? I'm not trying to be, my brother complains to me all the time about it. And I, and I know I own property, my brother, other brother owns property there, and we would like to know why it's that way. I'll be all right with it, bud.
That'll be fine.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is this number all there? We can call them ten?
Do you have your number on there?
Yeah, we need your phone number.
Three seven five nine four nine three.
What is it?
Three seven five nine four nine three. Cell phone is five three nine fifty one seventy five. Five three nine fifty one seventy five.
Fifty one seventy five.
Thank you.
We're gonna do approved minutes for February the eleventh meeting and March the second workshop.
Most approved minutes, I'll say.
In discussion, all vote. Approved to pay monthly bills. In motion.
I make the motion to pay monthly bills.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, now we're gonna come right here.
We gotta wait here.
No voting. We're gonna call that stone, the development authority.
Oh, can I speak after Audrey? It's thirty percent in our test.
That'll be fine, okay. Hold on, you gonna get back up there in a while. In hot seat. Silicon Ranch, three, five, and six.
Yes, sir, I'm back. Okay. As y'all know, we have some guests here tonight from Silicon Ranch, Luke Wilkinson and Matt Kispert. And Silicon Ranch, of course, is one of our largest existing industries, one of our largest taxpayers in the community. And they're planning for phases five and six. And of course, now they are finishing up with phase three, about to start on phase four. And phases five and six are proposed to be a hundred and seven megawatts each with eighty-five million dollars investment for each phase. Because of the more competitive pricing regarding solar power, the company is asking for a more aggressive tax abatement for phases five and six. The tax abatement that they're asking for is sixty-five percent for twenty-five years. Of course, what's been approved for phases three and four was fifty percent for seventeen years. And the development authority voted, and I would say that, you know, we're very still kind of questioning what was, what was voted upon, but the development authority did vote to go along with what the county had voted for in the past, and that was regarding the fact that any solar development over a hundred megawatts be given a fifty percent tax abatement for seventeen years.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Why do you say that's your question, what your development authority voted on?
But, well, I would say that it was a unanimous vote, but I would still say that there were a couple people who weren't mysterious on being one of those, being not really in favor of what was, what was voted upon. But I'll let her speak to.
But it was a unanimous vote.
It was a unanimous vote, yes, sir. Um, I did vote. I did vote yes. I did, did vote. I will say that the company, Silicon Ranch, of course, for every phase that they are, they're doing for these, for these two phases, for phases five and six, they did create about three hundred and fifty to five hundred construction jobs on each project. And the sixty-five percent tax abatement that was in question that they were proposing was approved by Early County for three project, projects last week was also approved by Ashen County for an eighteen megawatt project. The land that they are purchasing, they have purchased some of the land for phase five, not all of the land. They have not purchased land for phase six. They have options on some of the land, but the, like I said, the development authority voted for a fifty percent tax abatement for seventeen years. However, Silicon Ranch proposed a sixty-five percent tax abatement for twenty-five years.
Real quick, just to clarify, this is not about phases five and six. This is about phase five.
Okay.
Even though it says phase five.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the development authority didn't just vote on phase five.
What you saying, six is still kinda?
Six is still kinda.
Out there, out there in the air, that being a property bought in.
Right, right, right.
But that's all we think about, what's it, there's one phase.
Right.
Yeah, that's, we, we would like both five and six considered at the same time. I guess problem, problem that would be the development authority's voting on five, is correct.
Sorry.
What y'all wanna do? Man, you got anything?
I'm gonna make a motion to go with what they're asking on the sixty-five percent. That's what I'm gonna make a motion, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna explain myself. I figured it up on the farming end, and on the farming end, if you're looking at tax digest, you'll see about eleven thousand dollars a year. Now, on the, on their digest, digest, when they purchase this property, then it comes of industrial property. It's gonna go fifty-five hundred dollars a year, is what taxes gonna go to you, which you can figure your numbers, is gonna go from nine hundred to five million. Now, we'll get forty percent of that, and then they'll get sixty-five percent of whatever left there. But what I'm trying to say is, it's better than nothing. And I say better than nothing, it's better than what we're getting now. And that's, and that's the way I'm gonna explain it. I mean, we've got a lot of stuff we need to pay and look after. There's not gonna be any road construction. You don't have to construct any roads. You're not gonna have to do any cleanup, any mopping, or, I mean, you know, it's just, it's just gonna be kinda like you won the lottery. That's all I can say. And you're gonna get a check. But now, I'm one man, and, and I'm just putting that out there. That's my motion.
Can I know the help any good for the community?
And can I say something else? They have to talk, I give you the top twenty-five taxpayers in the county. Now, you can, oh, I'm not gonna call them out, but, but you can see the number one. If you combine any, any of, they still will go one. Oh, and that's, you know, they paying twenty-three percent, if you're located here, twenty-three percent of our taxes now. So, and two thousand, I'm telling you. But that's my case. You heard what I got to say?
I made the motion.
I made the motion.
I need to say.
I said.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to. You know, if y'all voted tonight against a board that y'all own, your board said they don't do fifty percent. There's no need to have a development authority board if we're gonna take a place of development authority. Just, just do a way of development authority.
May I say something?
If y'all can, if y'all can do everything, let's do a way of it. We don't need them, we don't need paid. That board recommends fifty percent paid. I'm gonna go with what that board recommends.
Vote for it. Send a motion.
Can I say something?
Well, we were told by Hank, we couldn't get two votes on the board. He couldn't get the votes on the board to take it over fifty percent. We've been over this and over this, and he said fifty percent was your limit on tax abatement. But if you level this out, it's thirty-eight percent average. So it's not over, because they didn't get anything for phase one and phase two.
I'm just saying, if your board brings me back recommendation for sixty-five percent, I will consider it, but I will not vote against that board that I put in place. Nor do I do any other board in this county.
Are you gonna go for sixty-five percent?
I said I would consider.
Well, here's my question. I don't even know if, if we can without a recommendation from the authority camp. Because that's normally the way this, this goes. You make the recommendation, we either approve it or we disapprove. We don't counter without going back to you all. So I, I guess we would be disapproving and thinking in fact, your board would.
I'd like, I'm letting my mother's conversation. It's gonna be a vote.
What if we make a motion on a second? Or is it?
I'm looking legally.
Motion in a second for sixty-five percent, which you can't really do because that's no, she's asking, she's asking you to take her recommendation of fifty percent over seventeen years. He made a motion that had nothing to do with the board's recommendation. You have to either approve or deny that board's recommendation. What comes next, if y'all approve, well, I'm not saying it comes next to your vote.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve that board's recommendation. That's what we got.
I need a second.
I'm gonna make a motion that we take it, take it back before the.
Well, if you deny it, that's what you, I mean, if you're not approving it, then that's what happens.
Okay. That's what I'm gonna make a motion.
We're gonna take it, aren't we?
Take it.
No, take it when you say you're gonna deny it.
So all voters in favor, need to vote to deny. All voters in favor.
Please say it.
I'd like to make a motion to that. I may have made a improvement.
Yeah, I have.
So that's it. It goes back. They negotiate for it.
Any further discussion, if something I'd like to further discuss? One thing we need to make sure of before anything comes back to us is the numbers are correct, because these schedules are not correct. So, you know, we get in here and then everything goes up in the air because we're looking at one set of numbers, and we're actually looking at another set of numbers, and nobody picked up on it. I'm as much blamed as anybody because I looked at the schedules a hundred times and never saw where they had the wrong number in the box out here. So if we can just make sure that when this comes back to us, it's got the correct numbers on it, and we're voting for a schedule, not, a schedule that's based on a percentage, not a number. So the numbers are representative of the schedule and the percentage, but that's what we need to be voting on. So the tax assessors can take it and audit it going forward, and the state can take it and audit it going forward, and we don't get any problems further down the road.
Right, I need the tax assessor should give me the correct schedule.
I got you. Because I just realized these numbers are off, and right now, I ain't got it. I got numbers that are too many dollars apart.
Right. I'm thinking he must have put in, had that through previous schedule, I'm not sure.
You have a flag here?
I got two other things I gotta talk about.
Okay.
I'm gonna be tired of me. One is EP American Footwear. I know y'all remember a couple, a couple years ago, we had an issue with the fact that a bond wasn't issued when they were given a tax abatement, and the company had asked at that time for the interest and penalty on the taxes to be forgiven. I think it had kind of just been discussed and was, was told them it would be forgiven, but we wanted to bring it before y'all and make sure that it was voted upon because the total for their twenty-eighteen tax, the interest and penalty is a little under thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventeen cents. So that, you know, that was just a, a problem or a correction that the county and development authority made several years ago. So we're asking for, on behalf of the tax commissioner, she asked me to come and present this and ask for the penalty and interest to be waived for EP American Footwear from twenty-eighteen.
I need a motion. We waive this? I make a motion?
Let me clarify this, so I'm clear, twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen?
She just said twenty-eighteen.
The penalties, I think, were just in twenty-eighteen.
When you say from, I mean, that's where you're competing, from twenty-eighteen forward.
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 I'm pretty sure.
Forward twenty-eighteen is, is what I had. The, for twenty-eighteen, the total was about thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars.
I need a motion. I need a motion, I make a motion. Second?
I'll say.
All vote.
And the last thing I have is this, uh, presentation, um, that we discussed at our economic development retreat back in the fall, uh, several of you were at, and, um, it is something that we've been talking about, and was one of our goals for the community to come up with a branding campaign, uh, develop some logos locally, and brand our community. You can see this is put together by a company called Three Sixty-Five Degree Total Marketing, and, um, they do a phenomenal job, they're the ones that did our county map not too long ago, um, it was last year they did it, but, um, this is something that has been taken to the city, it's been taken to the board of tourism, uh, the development authority, the, the, um, hospital, and the school system. Uh, we're asking for support for this. Um, I have received, uh, positive, uh, feedback, and, um, that they will support it from the city, from the development authority, and from the board of tourism. So, um, if everybody supports this, the, you can see the total package price is thirty-one thousand dollars, but if, if everyone supports it, the price would be about five thousand dollars. So, um, tonight, we're asking for your support for the development authority and the county to move forward with this community branding, um, uh, package, to ask y'all to give us about a thousand dollars toward the, uh, toward the process.
So, real quick, we got on board the, the schools, the city, the development authority, and the hospital?
No, no, I haven't presented it to the all of those yet. The ones that have said yes are the city, the development authority, and the board of tourism.
And you say it's gonna be filed a piece if we all support it?
That's right.
How much if?
That's right.
You have another mind, then?
So, if, if just the four, if the four of y'all, or the four of us supported it, the hospital and the school system said no, so that'd be thirty-one thousand divided by four.
It's basically thirty-one thousand dollars.
Thirty-five thousand.
But, you know, what we discussed down there that makes a lot of sense is, is if you look, uh, and, and it struck me as I rode around town, we got a logo for our rec park, uh, we got a logo for our city, different. We got a logo for Jeff Davis High School as a whole, that's different, and our county has a different logo. So, I mean, we appear to be four different entities, all residing in the same community. I mean, what it's all about, it, it, this, this is some things we discussed, you know, when you got kids out playing rec ball, you want to associate that, that JD logo with where they're gonna go to. And, and right now, we're so divided till it's not even funny, and, and this just seems to me to be one step in the right direction to maybe bring us all together and work together. So, given that, I'd like to make a motion that we participate, or give our commitment for five grand, if it helps. I need a second.
I'll say.
End of discussion? All vote. And we're gonna thank the city of Denton, we're, we're gonna cover theirs.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're not, they weren't included to start with, we're just gonna include them.
Right, right. Thank y'all very much.
But you have talked to the city, the Latin authority knows, and the county.
And the tourism board.
And the tourism board, like the county, I mean, the, the hospital and the school system.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Let's say you'll speak.
I will. Um, like I told them at the, uh, development authority, we've had a lot of opportunities, and this is money coming in, I'm talking about Silicon Valley's tax abatement. But anyway, this is a lot of money coming in, tax, in our tax base, which we need for our school system and our county. And if you look, Pike says from somewhere that they said on fifty percent abatement offer, seventeen years, it's been approved. But if you take these, these phases over time, it's only thirty-eight percent average waived. But we need to try to work with these people, if Allen County can do it, Verde County can do it, why can't we do it, you know? I mean, we don't have to build, build them a infrastructure, we don't have to build any roads, it's free, you know, it's just money coming in our county that we really desperately need.
Ms. Perry, can I reiterate too?
Right.
Can I, that, that I voted against what y'all, I voted against what your board recommended. Do you want me not to do that?
No, I don't, but I do want, but I did, I did not vote for it, I'll be honest with you, I did vote that day.
But you, you're on the board, and the majority voted for it.
The majority voted, but they, well, I'm not going there. But anyway, that's all I've got to say.
Man? Hey, and real quick, just so you know, uh, the, uh, the reason I brought that up about what we voted for, because you need to know what you're going up against when you talk about it, and that is something that we had brought up in the past. So, I didn't want anybody to come in blind saying, why are they voting for that?
I, I was, I was at the meeting years ago, when the other soul assistants come in, when we were talking about all that, Dwayne and I went to that board meeting.
The Heather, uh, next on the dinner, is Heather Meehan.
How are y'all this evening?
I'm sorry, Miss Meehan, we're just jumping around with the individuals, I'm trying to find who we are.
My concerns are about, uh, Ira Graham Road. I had a son that was coming home Friday night from his job, traveling on Ira Graham Road. Uh, as he's coming to the stop sign there at Bell Telephone Road, there's like major potholes. I'm not talking about little potholes, y'all, I'm talking about major potholes all the way down this road. And as they've been going to a church, Bridford Church, right there. He's coming home Friday night after work, and he hits one of these potholes, which is on his side of the road, busts his rim and his tire, which has cost me six hundred and twenty-seven dollars yesterday to fix that truck tire, because Friday night, he had already sold the truck. As he left work, he met with a fella that looked at the truck, and it was sold. So, he was coming home to get his belongings out of it, to return the truck back Saturday morning, and right now, it's still sitting on the side of the road out there on Ira Graham Road, because we're having to wait on a tire and a rim to come in. And I got pictures to show, I come here yesterday morning to speak with someone, uh, they told me to come back this evening at six-thirty, there was no, nobody to speak to me yesterday. So, of course, I come to six-thirty, and I'm late, but anyhow, I was told to six-thirty. So, after I come yesterday morning, I'm going back home after about forty-five minutes, and they have hatched the holes in the road, which is pathetic, it's not gonna hold up, it's not gonna hold up, y'all. And if you'll take your time and ride down that road, each and every one of y'all, you will see, and that's a very well-traveled road, it's with semis, log trucks, any and everything, and I have pictures to prove that I've taken, and thank God I took the, the before ones, but here's my child's truck with a busted rim and tire on it, and talk about heartbreaking. I mean, you can't even travel on a public road coming from your job, because we have to worry about hitting potholes.
We've had all this rain and this fog.
Amen, Ricky, but this goes way back, I've been in it there seven years, and it's been this way, Ricky.
I've traveled that road every day, at least two times a day to work, Ricky knows where I work. From, from Bell Tough Road to the Alma Highway, that road is trash, period. When you cross Four West Dock at Bridgeford, them three houses round the left, everybody rides in the middle of that highway, I almost hit somebody that day, 'cause they was in the middle of the highway, trying to miss all them bumps and holes in there. I know old rain, now, I've been traveling six years, and this rain happened to my ass.
Y'all, it is just tragic, I mean, y'all just take the time to look at these pictures, you know?
He's, he comes down there with his log trucks to Bell Tough Road, he takes Bell Tough Road up there to this place. That's what's happening, all this.
It's just absurd, absolutely, that's the one that he hit and busted the rim and tire on the truck. And I also had a police report of it, also wrote up of it. And from what I understand, there's been two more people just yesterday that went and filed reports, because a girl hit and busted that, hurled her front end, and yeah, so, it's a very bad road. And I'm asking for y'all's help, please. It's very costly.
So, it doesn't help any, uh, we're trying to, uh, work on the road that cuts through from the Douglas Highway all the way through, and we actually, uh, talked with a gentleman today about maybe we should...
God, Hank, you can't even turn in there in front of Miss Brenda Graham's, I mean, there's not a spot there that you could enter on that road without mud holes and just holes, but you can say that. And it's just a shame, you know? It's, uh, and then this, I had to pay for this out of my pocket, I'm like, what do we pay taxes for, I mean, come on?
Give us your phone number, and we'll get back with you.
Absolutely. My, uh, nine-one-two, five-five-one, zero-eight-one-six, and I also have a business right here in front of the jail.
You know about where this is, it's right, this, this is, where is this in relation to where I was talking about the other days? It's on, it's on this, uh, I can't form a statement.
It's right, Dave, much of Brenda Graham, but...
Amen.
Okay, okay.
Thanks. You're more than welcome, thank y'all for the time.
What about, uh, Lorraine Nash?
All got rubber, a rubber, little road superintendent, open seal bit for work truck.
You're more than welcome. Ricky, how long do you think this'll take before I can get something about his rim and tire, man?
We'll, we'll just...
Where do I need to follow it?
We'll talk about it, and we'll get back.
And you'll just get back?
We got your, got our number right now?
I got, I got a number, but she's got...
Thank y'all so much.
Hold on, have your, your picture.
Hey, hey, pictures, you got, have, 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 have...
Yes, sir.
I got more pictures. I, I was just saying that fax, because that's...
Good job.
Well, they don't make this stuff.
Have a good evening.
Y'all, we got this big old service truck, which y'all agree to get forward, we appreciate it very much. First bids from the folks. Supposed to be a forty-five-hundred GM Chevy, like, uh, the, uh, the total, the make and model, didn't matter, it's gonna be twenty, plus one bit of pressure in the corner. Sir, you didn't want to check on the full price? That way, we give them the option, uh, whatever.
We had that part, that we developed a, a count, not, like a Ford Dodge, yeah, whatever they were.
We asked for forty-five-hundred, now Woody's got a fifty-five-hundred down here. It's one oh eight, three seventy-two.
How much?
One oh eight, three seventy-two.
That's not what you asked for, you can't, you can't accept a bid. Next bid, you get, get, get what you asked.
That's new?
Yes.
You can't pull that off paper, can you, like, fifty-five-hundred?
That's much true. This is Daniel Schimmel, eight, Twain Burn. Ninety-three, five, ninety-four.
And what is it?
Eighty-five.
What, what, eighty-five?
Sir?
Now, I said, what is it?
What is it?
Forty-five-hundred?
It's a forty-five-hundred Chevy. That kind of, you, two body, wet, boom.
I've got a character, bro.
No, sir. On these trucks, Brad was checking all that, going before his boat, trying to tell me that, they say, they, they're running off, they're trying to blow it, they're trying to expand, and it costs anybody, and then we're leaving now.
I want you to, I want you to boom.
Them, them bodies only five hundred, it's been worth the thirty, about a dollar for the body.
How did we advertise this? Just put it in local paper, and that's it?
Right. Well, we only got one bid. That's right, but that's one bid.
And he, he begged to get the, the two, the other one, Woodsy and our kind of, like, begged to get them, to be honest. But we wanted the next two bids, and then obviously put their own thing.
What your models at? Nothing, twenty?
Well, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm sending a big with Woody, never, they, they ain't trying to save them, I would try to buy.
Didn't you have to go back to two, the Woody's trying to give them the deal, right?
I would never call them again. They should be wanting to save them.
The other person. But that's something I, what I've gotten with it.
If we look something twenty, thirty thousand miles on it, I don't know what we can look for, but I mean, I just know...
We have...
Can I just make there?
They hold five.
It's a hundred grand. Since we only got one bid, we...
About fifty-four, pressure, and everything, so, some, some of that, I don't know. But, uh, four fifty, that's, I, I don't know exactly how to speak, I'm sure what I'm speaking, like, I was very...
Well, I need a motion.
I think you buy one cheap, but, you know, it doesn't be, uh, I think that would be something...
Yeah, but actually, we ain't got the one, just meet the criteria, so we can put it back out.
What can we do with that?
Put it back out for this. Can we?
Well, I make a motion, since we only got one, the main criteria.
Are they sealed?
Yeah, yeah. You just fixed them, right?
And we need to vote, yeah, whether or not.
I reckon we can vote against it, though, okay, we can then... Well, that's a lot more than I thought, I would.
Was one back injury comes.
Yeah, I, I would kill that.
Trucks, I, I foregive a truck, the trucks is around, the trucks is around fifty-five, fifty-eight thousand, but, but I rest on the bay, and I don't know how, how to do it simple enough to bid, but...
It's all, it's...
I mean, if you, if you think you can find a cheaper, you don't have to say...
Right, we had the right reviews.
Oh, you always had a right, yeah, always. We always put that in, you have a right, because you should have.
Well, I make a motion to refuse.
I need a second, we, we just bid. What's your thoughts, Robert, just in discussion part of it, I mean, do you think there's trucks out there, if we really looked versus just going straight to dealers, that we could get, I mean, I'll just be honest with you, I got thirty-five-hundred, I think thirty-eight thousand dollars for eighty-eight thousand miles on it, but the best two bodies in the world, back there.
You ain't got, you ain't got a crane body, is this right?
No, no, no.
Crane, crane body gonna cost more than the truck.
Way heavier, dude, the body...
Cost more than the truck.
Yeah, the body is more than the truck. If you get a one, that's, that's only a four-thousand-pound wedge, which have a body, that I've talked with, I, I, I've done a lot of research on it, and the four-thousand-pound wedge is, is about the hardest thing to put on a forty-five-hundred. Maybe if you want to go up to a higher wedge, you got to have those trucks.
It costs crane, wedge.
I guess I'm not intelligent enough to, to make that call, because I ain't got...
I would like, I would like for us to call, you, you gonna get, you gonna get a better price on a body truck from a body county.
All I need a motion, man, I made the motion, we'd be dying this, and put bids out again.
I didn't say all that, but I, but can I add that to it? I'm not, we need a truck, I'm not against trucks, but I just think we can, we need some bids to compare it to.
You ain't gonna say that?
I just feel the truck is expensive. I've just thought trucks are expensive.
Yeah, they're expensive, too. What you think, Robert? What's your opinion?
But you gonna see it on the next bid, and if you do what Brad's saying over there, a body captain, I think, might be the way to go. I'm not familiar with all that, but I.
Well, you got Jackson Napout as your biggest, your biggest body captain, or Napout's one of the biggest body captains around, they go up about everybody, and you go, like, same body's gonna run about thirty-five, forty-five, fifty-eight.
Who y'all run with?
Not on my trust, it's, um.
It's gonna run to whatever you want to put on it. You can put a hundred thousand dollar body if you want it.
But, but I'm just saying, though, what body captains are out there, we can have the information to send out to them.
In fact, if you hide all the character person, they want to let them grant, add that to it.
All right, I got a motion to do away with it, the bid, let's do it again.
I'll say it.
End discussion. All vote.
Can you make it thirty more days?
Sir?
Can you make it thirty more days without a decision?
I made it five years, well.
I hope that might be a case.
But can we make, can we make a motion, that's we did, with information on body, or whatever information we need to get this truck, we need this work truck, we need it, but I think we got.
Or get somebody dead on the car. That's, that's, that's covered.
That, that's just strange to me. I mean, that's just strange to me.
Probably is, though, these dealers, they don't have a license.
Yeah, that's the thing about being a man.
Body captains, I'm telling you.
Putting these bodies on these trucks, so out of bounds, they have to send them to the county for the law. Some, they're gonna put their own bodies on.
So what you're saying, do the reverse, what about in body, they can put a truck underneath it?
You're right.
Probably, that's about, that's about my conversion rate, or apply on these animals, if they do it all.
Well, if you on this board, can you give us some info?
Yes, I'll get you the information that we use.
So how, how do we do that, when we can vote the next time, when we got bids, is my question.
That's y'all, buddy, just, y'all figure it out, depending what I do.
You'll give us allegations, I'll, I'll send it to the body captain from there, you'll see. What y'all know, we'll see.
You, Brad, you. What you want to get that?
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Robert. But they gonna get out. You gonna, you gonna. You mean, you didn't say nothing yet.
Yeah.
Approved, approved to bid workers' comp and profit liability insurance.
The government explaining what's going on here, this is putting back out the bid again this year, I'm assuming?
What's it say?
It says approval, bid workers' comp, profit, liability insurance.
Oh, that's, that's not what, that's not, that's not the, help, help, that's, that insurance is coming up, so we, we can just ask to bid that out. We, we, we are the two ladies, the company that we are bidding with.
Yeah.
So basically, we get such, and then we'll bid the right workers' comp and liability.
Absolutely, yes.
I need a motion.
Second.
I'll, I'll say it.
End discussion. All vote.
Upon a commission to the new jail project. I don't want to volunteer, but I think I could bring a lot to that project unless somebody else wants to do it. But my other thing is, I think we probably need two officials.
We just got one.
But we really need another, because somebody can't be there when you're.
That's a good point.
Two of them, oh, Ricky, draw her, Eric, take it.
Where you from, Mr. Preston?
We need to make a motion on that?
Yeah.
I made a motion that we appoint these two gentlemen.
And I'll say it.
End discussion. All vote.
I made the call.
Approved, deny closing courthouse on Good Friday, shares retiring, closing courthouse.
And we've been closing on Good Friday? I made a motion to close it.
I'll say it.
End discussion. All vote. Oh, and a new business for old business.
For fame.
Well, I.
We're gonna come back to that. All I need a motion would go is, I was going to, my man left, he done switched down. I was gonna ask him how that, how that new patching compound was working.
That is something new, so I mean, I really want that.
Well, that potholes everywhere.
Right. But he mentioned that we got something new, that's must be a lot better.
And, and the old business from previous and that, I, I just want to address these two ladies. I, I would try and bid, but if any board that we appoint brings me a recommendation, I'm gonna go with that one.
Well, we, we've actually voted on it three different times, so I don't know what, where we're standing.
But I, I'm just going by the one that Audrey dropped, she is, she is.
Can I say something to that?
Yeah.
And, and I understand that y'all met three times on this.
And we voted three times.
And that's right, but, but the, the right information had never been really put out there. So now, now you know the right information, am I right?
Well, no, we don't, we still gotta get together for that.
I know you don't know the right information, but you know that I, the main idea.
But you can vote on.
It's, it's cash money that's coming in our killing.
And we want it, we want all the way.
I know.
And I just, I don't want to vote against what your board says, and won't. And, and, and I didn't want to do that, but I don't want to lose.
I don't want to lose it either. I didn't vote that last time.
But, but y'all's meeting was before Baxter had voted on their stuff, so you didn't know what they was gonna vote.
We kind of knew, so that already.
Kind of figured it out, so now we know. So that's, I'm just trying to explain.
Well, I don't want us losing any tax dollars, but you didn't come, couldn't you give us tax dollars we can get?
The only thing we can't do, and I want y'all to understand this, they're asking us to vote on five and six, and six don't even exist.
Exactly.
It's just out there there, I can't vote on something that, I can't, but six, they ain't even voted a acre of their shit.
I was fixing to mention that, just make sure that your board knows that, it's just.
Well, they want you to vote on both of them.
But I can't vote on something that don't exist.
I know, but that's, they want you to vote on.
But you can vote on something that sticks with you, I mean, that, that's kind of, I mean, it's gonna exist. I, I don't know.
Yeah, well, generally, yeah.
It's not gonna exist if you don't vote on it.
Well, tax incentives.
They know you're gonna get it on six, I just don't want to vote on something that ain't.
Just can't, you know, now, we can get our stuff, but.
It'd be a lot easier with the MOU if we did it by phases as well, because they have to be all of it, they've been different years, and if, I mean, I'm speaking out of turn, but would it not be a lot easier?
Well, I mean, you can vote on them separately, you can say, phase five, we're gonna vote on this, phase six, we're gonna vote on this, but tax incentives are normally voted on way before a company invests in your.
You get it to them as an incentive to come.
Yeah.
I just didn't pick up on both my two at the one time, if that's what y'all.
But, but, but you, you got to present them both different.
Sir?
You got to present them both.
Yeah, yeah, you can, we can, we can present them both.
Okay, you have more, anymore of new business, old business? I need a motion, we go in and say.
I make my.
I say it.
I need my motion, go back in the, rest three nights.
All I need a, I need a motion that we gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna advertise in the paper for a week to hire two people, one of the first, and one of the final person. I need a motion, I make a motion.
I'll say it.
End discussion. All vote. I need another, I need another motion that we decided to give a share contract labor if we need her, two hundred dollars a day for them, if we need her.
I have to sue her, Doc.
I have to sue her, Doc.
I may a motion.
I'll say it.
End discussion. All vote.
Do y'all hiring a purchasing clerk and a county clerk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Why, you want a block?
No, sir.
First make the mark, rest.
I'll, I'll be here until seven-thirty or more.